Good evening. I'd like to call the City of Madison Board of Education School Board Meeting for February 23rd, 2023 to order. If we can rise for the pledge of allegiance, please.
Pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance. To the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with equal justice.
Thank you. Ms. King, roll call, please. Here.
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 Board, if you'll review the agenda, I need a motion and a second.
No move.
Second.
A motion by Ms. Lesman and a second by Mr. Newberry. All those in favor of the agenda you have before you, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Agenda passes. That moves us into presentations. Dr. Nichols.
And I just laid down my piece of paper. Thank you. There we go. Mr. President, members of board, I'm going to ask Dr. Kerry Donaldson to come forward and he's going to start along with Mr. Anderson to recognize and tell us a little bit about the fall of the James Clemens High School band.
I want to thank you guys for inviting us to be recognized and really want to introduce two of our drum majors that we have with us, Ayana Milligan and Logan Thompson. You guys will join us up here. Two of our three drum majors are here with us. Our third drum major's in a jazz band rehearsal preparing for the dessert concert at Liberty Middle School tomorrow. So Logan and Ayana are two of our student leaders and just want to thank you guys for the opportunity to be recognized and really it's super.
Can y'all come up and turn around so the camera can see you guys?
It allows us to do what we do. So and of course, you know, admin support like Dr. Thompson and all of our admin team at James Clemens, it really was a special season and I'm looking forward to continuing that because it never really stopped.
Well, you have some hardware back there.
We do.
Would you bring that forward and tell us what the hardware was for? We like hardware around here. And that's big hardware.
It's a good thing when you bring home the trophy taller than the band. Which is not safe. Just to kind of recap, this is our grand champion trophy from the Tennessee Valley Invitational at Sholes High School.
Excuse me. Can you speak into the mic?
Oh, I'm sorry.
You're being televised.
That would help.
There you go.
Um, the trophy next to Ayana is our grand champion trophy from the Tennessee Valley Invitational in Sholes High School. And the band was awarded best-in-class band, best-in-class percussion, outstanding soloist, and best overall band, also winner of the Charles Stratford Challenge Cup for best overall score. And that is our grand champion trophy from that. Best-in-class drum majors as well at that competition. The trophy next to Logan is also another best overall trophy that we won at the Peach State Invitational over in Rome, Georgia. And the band was awarded best-in-class band, best-in-class dance team, and winner of the Outstanding Music Achievement Award as well. So lots of hard work by the students for our competition show in addition to our halftime show that we do. You know, so again, just to watch these students, you know, put in all that effort and put in all that work and to see that hard work pay off and be recognized is always something special. So not just with the trophies, but you know, the support that we get from our community and of course, you know, the school system as well. So it's pretty special.
Well, Mr. Anderson and students, thank you so much. You represent a large group of students who start this activity earlier than June, probably. And I know there's a release going on now about what the show might be for next fall.
We're putting hands out there.
Hands out there. And a lot of summer work and then after school and before school, first period, first block in the mornings and throughout the summer. And we certainly applaud the efforts of the band and what they've done. Great contest season. I know these contests that you go to, they've been around a long time. They are some of the greatest competition quality of bands out there that come to those. So I know the effort to say that you were best in class is not just finding some contest to go to. That, a lot of hard competition at those. So, Mr. Anderson, we certainly appreciate all that work with our folks and also our middle schools.
Oh, absolutely.
We have great high school bands because we have great middle school bands. And you can't have a great high school band without good theater programs and getting kids excited. So congratulations.
Thank you, guys. Thank you. Thank you, all of you. Again, thank you.
Mr. Peck will want your picture with the trophy taller than the band direction. Dr. Donaldson, we're going to keep you on deck and let you recognize, tell us who the Presidential U.S. Scholars are. Those, as a board member asked last time, that the scholars are recognized for their outstanding SAT or ACT from the College Board, nominated by their chief state school officer, and recognized for their academic performance.
All right. Thank you for having me tonight. And before I announce the students, I want to thank the parents. One parent in particular, Ms. White, thank you for being patient with me with the phone calls. It took me some time to come back. So I see where your son gets his patience. So thank you very much. So like they said, these students are outstanding. They've done some wonderful things at the school. And it's an honor to be a serving leader to these students. And I believe we have everyone here. So I'll call your names so you can come up, okay? Ms. UT Dos. Joshua Wayne. Mr. Max White. Jeremiah Yang. Jerry Zane. Thank y'all for the wonderful service that you provided us. Thank you so much.
First of all, let me say congratulations. We'll get your picture.
Sherwood. All right, Sherwood. I'm sorry. Come on down to Sherwood.
Let me just say congratulations. And, you know, first of all, I think I'm right. The other Dr. Donaldson over here can correct me. I have two Dr. Donaldsons. So there were about 70 students in the state of Alabama recognized as Presidential Scholars. Twelve of those are from Madison City Schools. Almost 20% statewide of the students that received the recognition you've been honored with for your performance come from our school district. And so certainly appreciate your parents and the support they've given you. I certainly appreciate your teachers, not just your high school teachers, teachers in kindergarten and first grade and second grade, and the work that you've put into it. Nobody can leave out what you've done to accomplish this. And to be part of a very select elite group across the state of Alabama is a great honor for you and your desire to achieve. So on behalf of the district, congratulations. And Dr. Donaldson, I have certificates for each of them. And you'll please take care of that. And we applaud you. I think that was right. Dr. Donaldson, 12 out of 70. I think you had that percentage the other day, about 17% from across the state. So.
Incredible. Any other presentations, sir?
Mr. President, no, sir. Not this month, but we will in the coming days.
Now's the time of the board meeting for public comments. If you've signed in with Ms. King prior to the board meeting, then I'll open up public comments. Ms. King, we don't have anyone who's signed up tonight, so we will close public comments and we will move into action items. Dr. Nichols.
Mr. President, members of the board, I recommend for your approval the consent agenda that contains the following items. A, the minutes number 2303 of February 9, 2023. B, policies 4.9 political activity and 7.13 school wellness. C, a field trip for Liberty Middle School winter guard to go to Bowling Green, Kentucky. D, a field trip for Bob Jones and Discovery Middle School band students to go to Bowling Green, Kentucky. E, a field trip for the Bob Jones band students to attend the World Championships Guard International WGI in Dayton, Ohio. And F, an agreement by them between the City of Madison Board of Education and School Pass to provide a visitor management system for the elementary schools starting in spring of 2023 and going through March of 2024.
Thank you, Dr. Nichols. Board, the superintendent recommends approval of the consent agenda items A through F. Can I have a motion and a second?
No move.
Second.
A motion by Ms. Lesman and a second by Mr. Cummings. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Consent agenda passes. Dr. Nichols.
Mr. President, prior to my recommendation, I'm going to ask Dr. Donaldson to come and outline for the board our 2023 summer learning programs. Dr. Donaldson?
Is it that time already?
Is that time? Thank you, Dr. Nichols and board. These proposals are for our summer learning programs, which include elementary and secondary EL Summer Camp, elementary summer learning programs that are both in-person and asynchronous, and secondary summer learning programs that are both in-person and asynchronous. All of the programs will run the month of June, Monday through Friday. Elementary EL will be held at Midtown. Secondary EL will be held at James Clemens. Elementary summer learning will be held at Mill Creek. Middle School summer learning will be held at Discovery. And high school summer learning will be held at both Bob Jones and James Clemens. Students will be invited to attend the in-person learning programs based on academic progress or deficiencies that they're showing. And the invitations will start to go out in the month of March. Asynchronous summer learning is open to every student in the school system. And students can work in the grade level that they just finished, or they can work in the grade level they will be moving into. Both the elementary and the secondary summer learning programs are funded through SIR funds. And every summer, we always set up a spotlight or a highlight day where we invite you to go visit all of the summer learning programs. And we will be doing that as well. We'll get with Ms. King on the date. So you have that date on your calendar and hopefully can make it.
Thank you. Go ahead, sir.
Were we able to provide lunches during this summer program this year?
Not anymore. We provided breakfast and lunch in the past, but that was through like the COVID relief efforts federal. And so Madison City does not qualify for summer lunch programs. And so we will not be able to provide that this year.
Was there some discussion about us trying to see if we can find some resources? Did I miss? Do I remember?
Lee Shaw always works with us and she works with partners throughout the community to make sure that there is a lunch or a breakfast on hand for students who may come in and they are hungry, or if they have forgotten the lunch or something. And she always works to make sure that there are different snacks provided. May not be a specific snack every day, but she works really hard with community partners to make sure that those resources are sprinkled throughout our summer learning programs.
Excellent.
We very much appreciate Lee's help.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Donaldson. Mr. President, members of board, I recommend for approval the 2023 elementary and secondary EL Summer Camp, the 2023 elementary summer learning programs, and the 2023 secondary summer learning programs as presented by Dr. Donaldson.
Board, the superintendent recommends approval of the 2023 summer programs that were presented by Dr. Donaldson. Can I have a motion and a second?
No move. Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Overkesh and a second by Mr. Newberry. Discussion, board? Anything further, Dr. Nichols? Yes, sir. Seeing none, I will call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Motion passes. Dr. Nichols, personnel actions.
Mr. President, members of the board, I recommend for approval a list of substitutes for Madison City Schools.
Board, the superintendent recommends approval of a list of substitutes for Madison City Schools. That list has been provided to you. Can that be taken as a group? With the group being fine, I'll ask for a motion in a second.
No move.
Second.
A motion by Ms. Lesman and a second by Mr. Newberry. Any discussion? Call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Motion passes. Dr. Nichols.
Mr. President, members of the board, I recommend for approval the supplemental contracts for work performed for Madison City Schools.
Board, the superintendent recommends approval of the supplemental contracts for work performed by Madison City Schools. Can these be taken as a group? With the group being fine, can I have a motion and a second?
No move.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Cummings and a second by Ms. Lesman. Any discussion?
This may be the smallest list of contracts that I've ever seen for us. So we'll take this and be happy with it. So mainly it's for spring activities. There's some band staffing and then some face-to-face summer programming. So it's pretty standard for this time of the year. And I appreciate the work to get us ready for our summer programs as well. Some of those contracts are already on here that won't take effect until June. So I appreciate the work on our staff to do that.
Excellent. If there's nothing further, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Motion passes. Dr. Nichols, personnel actions.
Mr. President, members of the board, I recommend for approval the remainder of the personnel agenda, leaves and retirements and other activities on this list.
Board, the superintendent recommends the personnel actions you have before you. Can these be taken as a group? With the group being fine, can I have a motion and a second?
No move.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Newberry, second by Ms. Lesman. Any discussion? Call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Personnel actions before you have passed. Dr. Nichols, are there any you'd like to call attention to tonight?
Yes, sir. Mr. President, first, the retirement that was acted upon from Ms. Pam Bashir, longtime kindergarten teacher at Horizon Elementary. Taught kindergarten for 25 years plus. She started as special ed teacher and certainly loved her kids and worked with many and stayed late and came early and worked on the weekends. And we certainly applaud the work that she has done. And we hope that her days of retirement will be such a blessing to her as she has been to students. And then I don't even want to talk about Bonnie Davis. In fact, I'm going to bring her back next board meeting. And we ought to have her here. I can't even begin to discuss all that Bonnie has done. And I don't, you know, during the last few years and the challenges that the district and our state and community faced, I don't know a person who handled it more gracefully was such a great resource to me personally as superintendent. I know that Mr. Terrell and Mr. Jones, they were together more than, every day, I think, working to do the best that we could across the district. And sometimes...